Sections of city code that are recited. And I found that, so that's why rather than giving you guys a completely separate draft. I just have that section on the petition requirements.
So what did the state change? I didn't really understand this. Exhibit A very well. I guess we can do the public hearing and then discuss that.
If you wanna do that, then I can discuss.
I have a motion.
I'll make a motion that we enter public hearing.
Second. Have a motion and second to enter into public hearing to receive comment concerning the. Proposal update the West Haven City Annexation Policy Plan. All those in favor say aye. Okay, we're in public hearing. Any member of the public who'd like to speak on this can please come up to the podium if you're here in person, which there is no one in the audience. If you're online, if you would like to just unmute yourself and tell us who you are, that would be great. Is there anyone else online? Okay, is there anyone online that wants to comment? Cause there's no one here in person. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we leave public hearing. I'll second it.
Have a motion and second to leave public hearing on the. West Haven Annexation Policy Plan. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, we're out of public hearing. Now we can discuss it.
Um, so. There's two different components to an annexation policy plan. There's like the overall policy statement, which is what this is. It's typically several pages. And then there are certain sections of this that actually get pulled out and put in city code. But that will, that will happen after the ordinances in its final form. And then there are certain sections of this that actually get pulled out and put in city code. That will happen after the ordinances in its final form. And then there are certain sections of this that actually get pulled out and put in city code. That will happen after the ordinances in its final form. And then there are certain sections of this that actually get pulled out and put in city code. That will happen after the ordinances in its final form. And then there are certain sections of this that actually get pulled out and put in city code. That will happen after the ordinances in its final form. And then there are certain sections of this that actually get pulled out.
Are we good now?
I think so.
Wow, that was scary.
That was my fault? No, oh, okay.
No, it wasn't your fault. Cascading down though or something. If it was the mics. Wow, that you sounded really intelligent with that though, over and over and over, so I congratulate you.
So generally speaking. What the annexation policy plan has to do is say, okay, this is where the city is. This is where it has grown. These are major employers. These are the growth drivers, things like that. And then we basically have to. Repeat a lot of what's in city code, what's in state code. Cause really the extent of a cities. I don't, I don't wanna say jurisdiction, but basically. Even though this, even though this draft and the map that's in it doesn't change the map. The map. Uh, that outlines the city's annexation boundary areas is. Where the city has the most leeway. In annexations, the state tells us how to process them. And the state says, this is what a petition has to have. This is what the public hearing requirements are. So there's, to a certain extent, there's not a lot of flexibility with for cities. Cause if something's in your annexation area. Then it's in your annexation area. That doesn't mean you have to annex it. Because obviously that's when you put in things like, okay. You know, uh, what are gonna be the costs to the city on this? And with West Haven, that's a huge thing. And I think I repeated this in my staff report. Because we don't have. A prop- a city portion of the property tax. I mean, you guys all still pay property taxes. Just none of it comes to West Haven City. We really have to look really closely at the financial cost to. To the city. Because there's gonna be a. There's gotta be a balance between. What the city annexes in, knowing that we're not gonna get property tax revenue. And the costs that are gonna come to the city. To maintain the additional infrastructure and things like that. So there's this. There's kind of a complicated dance with this that the city has to do because we don't have the city portion of a property tax. I think if we, if the city wants to continue that, then when we look at zoning stuff when it isn't, then when we look at what zone. We're gonna set stuff out when it does annex into the city, we really need to strongly consider. I'm not saying six thousand square foot lots, but we really need to strongly consider something more dense. Than one acre lots. Because population is what drives revenue. And if we can do that and get these developments that are paying for themselves. Then it, I, for lack of a better term, can delay. Push out the, I guess, time when the city has to really seriously look at implementing a property.
So my question is, you said, so we look at rezoning when people wanna annex in, but don't you need to change the zoning? Before people annex in, or you could have people building whatever they can.
I think she's saying, look at it when we do the general plan.
Well, and there's two things that you have to do. You have to zone property when it annexes into the city. And you can't, you can't zone property outside of the city boundaries. When you annex in, part of the annexation process is setting the zone of the property. Right now, if you guys look, if you guys look at the map that's over there on the wall under the clock. The, all of that green area on the northwest area of the city. That's not within the city right now. Most of it's not. But that's, that's basically the annexation boundary that the city has right now. Right now, the city says, okay, when we annex in, you have to do it at A two.
So I guess that, that's what I'm saying is if that doesn't get changed, why would anybody wanna annex in before they develop? They, they can develop at unincorporated and have. And we're going to have all the responsibility. None of the benefits, so. So doesn't that have to be taken care of before?
So what you're pointing out is exactly the conversation that during the process. Of updating the annexation policy plan and during the general plan process. That is one of the key conversations that the planning commission and city council have to have. Because right now, whether or not West Haven annexes another acre of land into the city. We do and will continue to get most of the burden. Because it's our roads. I mean, four thousand is. Four thousand is a state road, Midland is a state road, we know that. But there are all these other major east-west roads that are West Haven roads. And if we don't, like, if we don't annex these properties in, and if we don't figure out some way. To get, to bring in these additional residents and the additional permit fees and all of that, to bring in the additional revenue. That comes with development, then that's pushing us closer. To needing a property tax because we're gonna get all the burden of the traffic. We're gonna get all the burden on the par- well, not all the burden on the parks. We'll get a huge burden on the parks and we're getting none of the benefit. And I, and like I said, I'm not suggesting that.
If we wanted to recommend to the city council, I mean, can we change the map at this point, or is that a different?
If you guys, if you guys want to. You, you do make a recommendation to the city council on this. If you guys want to say, okay. We wanna square up the annexation boundaries, cause that's another thing that I think I pointed out in my staff report is. And this is reflected in some of this changes to state code. Annexation boundaries need to follow, like, they need to follow roads, they need to follow. Things like that, because right now we've got some parcels that are split in half. Because it follows a canal. I know that at one point, there'd been conversations between the city and the county. About our annexation boundaries just going out, all the way out to fifty-one hundred and up to eleven fifty. Cause twelve hundred curves and beca- and it turns into eleven fifty where it meets fifty-one hundred.
Well, two county commissioners came before the last election. Told us that's what they wanted us to do.
We've had that conversation. I think it's wise to do that. And again. That doesn't mean the city's gonna go in and annex people. We can't force annex. We're extremely limited by law, by state code on the ability to force annex. There are very, very limited situations where that can happen. But we're just saying, these are the areas that we'll consider. This is our line in the sand. Commissioner Wilson brings up a really good point, and that's why. I bring up the conversation when we're talking about what we're gonna zone stuff at when we annex it in. Right now, the way people are allowed to develop in the county, there's no incentive to annex into West Haven. Now, from my personal and professional experiences and opinion, I don't think the county should be playing developer. But.
Playing what?
Developer or playing city. I don't believe, but whatever, it is what it is. And they're doing that and they're allowing people to develop third acre lots. And. So right now, there's. And they're getting the revenue. And well, but at the same time, we've had conversations with the county where they've tried to say. Look, the city has to annex this in because we don't have the resources. To do, you know, the sewer lift station that's gonna happen here and. Then it's like, well, why'd you let him do third acre lots then? It's a whole like. It's a whole series of conversations, but that's. That's something that I think needs to be a serious point of discussion. And I think that's the main, I mean, cause we can talk about like. The grammatical changes, or if we wanna do add extra this, that, or the other in here on what we're gonna. Look at when they, when they come to us to annex. But really the conversation is where are the boundaries gonna be? And what are we gonna zone it as when they annex it in? Those are the two key questions that the commission needs to discuss. And then when it goes to the city council, that the council needs to discuss because. I mean, the plan that's in front of you, it's just. Updating the text to be compliant with what it says in state code and outlining the process, giving history of the city.
This isn't a rezone, just a restate, right? You're not proposing any zone sizes with this one at all?
No, but those are, but that's something that I think needs. Needs discussed if we're gonna leave it at A two.
Changed three or four years ago, the comment from city council was that it would be. Relooked at and reevaluated and. It hasn't happened.
Now's the time for it to happen.
When we're talking about a sales tax increase or something like that, are we figuring in adding commercial zones? Rather than just all residential to try and balance the two? Or does that commercial impact to try and avoid a sales tax? Or not a sales tax?
So we have, we do have areas within the city boundaries that. We're saying, okay, this area is gonna be more appropriate for commercial. And there are, but when it comes to commercial areas, we haven't really looked at. What's outside the current city boundaries. For example, the Ogden Clinic, and this is in the city boundaries. The Ogden Clinic has brought, bought property on the west side of the city to do a clinic. I mean, they're a few years out from it, but like, that's not a sales tax generating one. But. But there are other areas because, and this is another thing you have to look at when you're talking about like. The burden on infrastructure as the city grows. I mean, cause if you look at the city now. And it's not gonna follow the same development pattern, but if you were to build out the city at. Say an average of two to three units an acre. The city would probab- with what's in our annexation area now. The city would probably add an additional fifteen thousand people. Just based on like household sizes and things like that. You don't wanna have a town, cause we're at about twenty-two or twenty-three thousand people right now. You don't wanna have a town of close to forty thousand people and have. All of the commercial and recreational amenities and services on one end of the town. You need to spread them out a little bit. Because that actually alleviates pressure on the infrastructure. Because you don't have all thirty thousand households going to, you know. Smiths or Walmart or Target or wherever, Target, that would be nice.
So I think that's what he's, that's what he's saying too, is when we're annexing this in, we're gonna have to kind of. Project, this might be a good for commercial area.
Well, don't you do that in the general plan?
You do, in the future land use plan on the general plan, you. You can, you can, you can handle this a couple ways. You can make a statement in the annexation policy plan that. That when property is annexed in, it will be zoned in accordance with the future land use plan, map on the general plan. And then if somebody wants to do something different, they can make their case on, on why, and then the planning commission and city council weigh that out. So, and then when you do the future land use, uh, map in the general plan, then you say, okay. On the intersection of, you know. Fifty-one hundred and thirty-three hundred or wherever it is that the new high school is going. You know, we're gonna have a little commercial section across the street from it, so the kids can go get a cheeseburger and a Mountain Dew. On their lunch break.
I made it through high school on pop and chips.
Well, I, I just, you know, I'm, I'm feeling that, you know, people wanna avoid the property tax, so I. I'm assuming that, you know, we're going to have to rezone some areas in order to put in commercial.
You make a good point about the amenities and stuff too, though. And we have to fix it because we got. That canal is just.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I don't know why, at one point, I believe, I haven't been able to find. A map that goes back that far. At one point, I believe. That the annexation boundaries did go out to fifty-one hundred and then up to eleven fifty and across. I don't know when that changed. I don't know why that changed.
We proposed that, but it never got accepted. We proposed that. Proposed it, but it didn't get accepted.
To me, it's not like you're telling anybody they have to annex in, you're just opening up the possibility to make it more of a clean line.
Yeah, into planet.
Yeah, I mean, people can choose whether they want to or not.
Cause I don't think the county's putting a lot of effort into planet.
Um, there are, like I said, there are a few situations where if you've got like. This whole block of a hundred acres or something like that, and one person owns eighty acres. Like, there are some circumstances where you can require people to be pulled in. But those, like I said, those are very limited. Which is a good thing.
You don't wanna drag someone in kicking and screaming.
And there, there will be another. Planning commission meeting before city council, before this were to go to city council. And we're not under a deadline to get this passed. So, I mean.
So my question though is, can we change the map if we want to at this juncture?
You can tell me that you'd like to see a map that has different boundaries on it, and I will email Ryan. And say, Ryan. Can you change the boundaries and give me a new map? Because you can make whatever changes, well, except for state code, you can't change state code. You can make whatever changes to this you want, because ultimately what goes to the city council is your recommendation. They may ta- they may pull it back, they may tell me change the map back, but. If you want a different map, if you want different boundaries in there, tell me to have different boundaries and we're good.
I think there should be different boundaries. What do you guys think?
Where would the different boundaries be? Are, are you talking about this entire blue section being the boundaries?
No, the blue section's already the current boundary of the annexation area, right? The red dog is the city boundary.
I'm okay with moving it to fifty-one hundred and eleven fifty. That makes sense to me to square.
Are we allowed to put other cities in our annexation? Like saying that we'll accept.
Can you do other cities?
Or do they have to be unincorporated cities?
I don't wanna take over Hooper, there's just a few pieces of Roy that cut into.
What? When I reference fifty-one hundred up to twelve hundred, what that essentially does, it takes it from here. This is fifty-one hundred. And it goes up here.
And just squares it off.
And just squared it off.
But nobody in the middle can annex. You have to be contiguous with the city. Before you'd ever get clear out there.
So it's all of Weber County on septic? Do they, do you have to annex into our city to get sewer? And like secondary water?
Because the special, the central Weber sewer district. Actually has different boundaries, and that's another thing the state has really pushed is. Get everybody's annexation boundaries on the same page, like. Make sure the cities line up with sewer districts, line up with school districts, stuff like that. People are a little loosey-goosey with that interpretation, but. You know, like, we've got a situation with this property right here, that I'm trying to figure out how to handle. Cause they wanted to develop like seventy townhomes.
Yeah, we remember that.
Where is that? Is that at thirty-three hundred and thirty-five hundred?
So I gotta go to county next week and have some conversations.
Will you let us know when that's on their agenda?
It's on their, it's on the county planning commission for a public hearing on Tuesday night.
Oh, this coming Tuesday.
That's an unincorporated that wants to do that, right?
They wanna develop in the county, and I'm. Pushing very hard to get the county planning commission to not let them do that, but.
How many townhomes? How many did you say?
Is that a two or a three story?
On how much land is it?
Well, um, about. Let's see, the residential developed part of it is about five point.
Eighty townhomes on five acres.
And isn't the boulevard gonna go right along there?
That's pretty high density.
Yeah, like, that's a whole. I'll copy you guys on the nice long letter I'm sending.
Yeah, if I recall, they were gonna do commercial on the bottom and then townhomes above. So it would be three stories.
That's still pretty crowded.
Like, I mean, that's a whole issue and I'm working on it, and that's what most of my day tomorrow is gonna be when I get here, but.
You need a baseball bat.
She's got one, she loves baseball.
Jeff, remember, this is being recorded.
I'm sorry. Go play baseball.
He was being flippant, YouTube.
But if somebody's out here, they're probably gonna be told they have to use, um, septic tank. But if they're here near the special service district lines and stuff like that. Then this property was annexed into central Weber sewer districts boundaries. So there, if it gets approved. They'll be hooking on the sewer. So some of sewer versus septic depends on where it is. But when we talk about changing the map, like I said, it takes it from essentially here. And just squares it off.
I thought we decided that when, when they knew, when they were voting to make that new city and there was all that speculation and then.
And that may be why.
That's, that's when we did.
Kinda talked about that, and then Plain City was gonna take the West Weaver, you know, like, in their annex declaration. We decided that was the line that we were gonna use.
Then Plain City backed off and.
I wanna, I wanna play well with others, but. This is just me thinking like a commercial real estate person, but. The area to the north of, what is that road? Forty or eleven thousand, is that it? Yeah, twelfth street, so just like to the north of it, right? Bordering up against Marriott Sladeville and Plain City. That would be a great area for distribution because they're already building distribution stuff there, so. It's a matter of time. If nobody's building residential there, they're gonna wanna put stuff there, so it'd be good to. Yeah, or big box, so.
And so that's part of, that's part of the discussion, it's like, and they need that.
It wouldn't square it out, but it would be up against the existing Plain City and Marriott Sladeville boundaries. I mean, I wanna play nice with them, I don't wanna. Ruffle any feathers, but.
Like, even if we, even if we were to annex all this in, you can't really do anything until thirty-five hundred west. But out here, the county just created, and it's like way out here. But the county just created a huge project area, they're calling promontories and something.
Like a industrial park kind of a thing?
Yeah, kind of like, uh, the Business Depot in Ogden, cause the Business Depot in Ogden basically is.
Yeah, and they're running out of land too.
Um, and so, I mean, there are some issues, even if you say, this isn't all the river. Even if we were to annex every acre in this whole area, there's no way it will all go back residential. The need is important to all the residential. But, you know, it may be that. That we, that we just say, okay, for this week, Sherry, just go and change the map here. And then, you know. People go back, think on it, or look at it and say. And then decide what we wanna do, what we wanna put in the policy plan on a statement as far as zoning. Like, if it comes in and it's already developed, we'll look at whatever city zone most closely matches. Like, if it comes in and it's already developed, we'll look at whatever city zone most closely matches it. If it's undeveloped, we'll look at what general plan anticipates for zoning.
Yeah, that's what we need to do, cause existing stuff, we need to, we need to plan around it. Um, is there a city, Hooper's next to us out there, do we touch Hooper on the line we have now? Like, does Hooper go to fifty-one hundred?
Hooper just goes to fifty-one hundred.
Okay, that's why I'm gonna make sure that, we don't leave a gap, like, you know what I mean, like a lot gap or anything? That would be terrible.
I, I, to the best of my knowledge, Hooper doesn't go.
Too far north?
Hooper doesn't go east of fifty-one hundred.
Right, yeah, I didn't think they did.
How far north does it go?
Um, I'd have to look, I think these guys are in Hooper.
It goes up to.
But I, I don't know that it goes any further than that. But I wouldn't suggest we go any west of fifty-one hundred, just. Like, just draw a line in the sand and say, this is where we're gonna stop.
Where's Legacy gonna hit? Where's Legacy gonna end up?
Don't know.
Well, I know, but, no, we don't know Weber County, but we know where it's gonna end in Weber County, right? Cause they've got the Davis part done.
I thought it was fifty-one hundred. They're buying up land.
Have to design, they have done some property acquisition, but they're not. Don't plan on anything, don't believe anything you hear about where it's gonna go, cause you don't even know their website says we don't.
So it could take a radical shift westward at some point, we wouldn't.
Yeah, we would have to deal with that, like, I know this development right here. Where the elementary schools going, they purposely planted these lots to be two hundred feet deep. And those will be the last ones if they sell, and these will be the last ones to be built on, because that's how much. They would need, that's how, if Legacy comes through here. Um, that's about how deep it would need to be there right away, so anyways.
That's a lot. It'd be nice if they would get their act together so we can plan.
Well.
At least just tell us where it's gonna be. Yeah.
And it's like, they can only do so much in a given time, because they only have so much money.
It's just, you know, as they delay, the costs go up.
Yeah, well, and it's like, if those houses west of the elementary school get built. It's gonna cost them ten times as much money, than if they had just gone in and bought the however many acres of our land versus. You know, several million dollars for, like, getting people new houses, relocation, all of that. So.
To mention just the, the sheer agony of it, you know?
Yeah, it's. In some respects, it's a no-win situation for them.
Yeah, thanks for showing us that, cause I'm very visual when I learn, so.
And I think it helps give, it gives context.
If we could see where the other cities are in relation to that, if we square it off, where do they end up, that would be nice too.
Yeah, we could do that too.
Cause if we're gonna leave, I mean, we don't wanna leave just a little skinny strip or something stranded. Between two cities.
Well, and maybe if you want, what we could do is. Is take it out and square it up, but then have Ryan or Clint, whoever does the map. Have them shade in in a different color, other cities' annexation areas.
Yeah.
That'd be good.
That would be very good.
Do you want me to have, do you want me to have a different map prepared for next time that shows that?
Yeah, that would be great, thank you.
Yeah, I think everybody's on board with that. Melinda, do you have any comment?
What?
I was asking.
Melinda's still out there somewhere.
If she's still in the stratosphere.
Or we lose her in that whole Zoom break.
Elon might've turned us off, I don't know.
Could've got lost in all that reverb that we had.
We have a storm coming through too, so. Okay, I think we're, we're in agreement to that.
Um, the other question to ask, um. Is what we can do too. Since we're gonna, since we're gonna have it at another meeting, and since we're gonna have, um, another map on there. What we can do is, um. Highlight, shade, whatever, the areas in the squared off boundary that are already developed. And what their density is. Would that be helpful?
Yeah, that'll save us time too when you do the, um, general plan or the future land use plan.
I feel like people that make maps like that just have fun.
Yeah, both of those things are, both of those things will be easy to do.
And tell them we don't want any weird colors, like last time.
If he could use like blue and silver, that'd be awesome.
What's the new, I think the new junior high though is gonna be different colors.
Oh, I don't know, I meant blue and silver because of the Cowboys, not because of the Silver Wolves.
Fremont, yeah. But see, you gotta do Roy too, cause we have some of the residents go to Roy's, we gotta have gold and. What's the other color, brown?
Let's go in black.
Is it black?
That's better than brown.
Um, so with, with those two things, are there other? Things that we need to look at on this draft, or do you wanna just?
Do you have any typos?
Get this stuff.
Natalie?
Get this stuff and then. Bring it back next time.
Do we wanna do typos now or wait until next time?
Why don't you just email the?
Why don't you just email them to me, since I'm gonna have to update it anyways? Just email them to me and I'll fix them.
Yeah, and I think you can just throw, can you just throw A back into it? Without having Exhibit A separate?
Oh, if you want me to, the exhibit from the staff report, now that you guys have seen it. I can just go in and swap it out.
Yeah, I'd like a clean.
Yeah, I just wanted you guys to see it as a standalone thing, what needs to change because of the last legislative session. But I won't put the exhibit back on the staff report, I'll do a different staff report and just take the exhibit and swap out the language.
Sounds good.
I only have one thing on Exhibit A, and so if it's gonna come back, I just didn't understand. Number two at the very beginning.
You didn't understand what?
It's number two. Where it says contain the signatures of comma if.
It's a really long wonky sentence, but that is how it is written in state code.
Okay.
Yeah, it's contain the signatures of, if all the real property within the area, da, 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 da.
Oh, no, the sentence is fine, I was just looking at contain the signatures of if, that's kinda weird.
Of, well, no, it's like grammatically, it's like. The commas are so, if you lifted the chunk between the commas out, you would still have a flowing sentence.
Okay.
So, if you took.
What if it was a colon?
If you took the langu- the, the wording between the two commas out. It would say contain the signatures of the owners of all the publicly owned real property or the owners of real private property.
I get that, it's just that little comma weird thing, anyway.
Yeah.
Come on, help me out Natalie.
I'm not even with you.
That is what.
Yeah, it's, it's grammatically correct.
Okay.
I got burned the last time saying I didn't like something, and they said that's the way it has to be, so.
Well, that was a legal issue.
That was different.
Yeah.
Don't quit on me now.
Alright, anything else on this, where we, I think we need to table it, right?
Correct, I think.
Well.
Table with the.
But we want to see the new map with our suggestions.
Yeah, but I don't think you need to mandate that or anything. Just table it, right?
Yeah, I mean, strictly speaking, you don't have to table it, but you can.
Doesn't it just stay open, if we don't do anything?
Yeah, if you don't do anything, it stays open.
I'd table it. Just to be consistent.
Yeah.
Yes, please.
I make a motion, we table, um, discussion and action on a proposal to update the West Haven City annexation policy plan.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to table the proposal to update the West Haven City annexation policy plan, all those in favor say aye? Any opposed? Alright, it's tabled. Alright, number seven, public hearing to receive comment concerning a proposal to adopt a revised zoning map for West Haven City. There are no zoning applications currently to the city, nothing is being rezoned. We just went, the city staff went through and laboriously. Went through and looked at all the actual code and all the actual ordinances that were passed. To find out what the real zones are in the city, and they have come up with this new map that is accurate. As some zones, uh, some places were not zoned correctly. Is that a fair statement of what happened?
Yes.
And I understand Alka worked really, really hard on that.
I. This has been a really long process. Um, but it was something that I felt really strongly about after what we went through last summer. And it turns out there are some things that are different. Um, I have gone over this, um. With Amy, um, I have asked her, you know, do we. Um, do we go ahead and, and, uh. And rezone anything now, and she said no, because we need a, we need a baseline.
Right.
And then everything, because I mean, it's taken us seven months and a hundred and sixty-five ordinances, some of them are. Almost thirty years old, um, and she said that way, when this ha- if there's a question about zoning. We only have to go back to this.
Right.
Because we have done hours and hours of legwork on this, and. Um, like I said, there are. There are four, and they're listed out and you're given addresses in the staff report. There are four things that, um. That are, that need fixed, like Country Cove was zoned commercial. Um, Grace Park. There's, um. You know, there's an issue with theirs, there's an issue with the townhomes that are on Midland, um, just. Uh, north of four thousand, so there are some things that are gonna need to be redone, that are gonna need to be rezoned. But, um. The city attorney, Amy, said, just adopt this the way it is, and then move forward and rezone those after.
We should probably move into the public hearing part of this one first.
Yeah, we just wanted to explain it in case there was somebody online who wanted to comment. Cause there's still no one here, alright, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion on this one, I make a motion to enter public hearing, receive comment concerning proposal to adopt a revised zoning map for West Haven City.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to enter into public hearing, receive comment concerning a proposal to adopt a revised zoning map for West Haven City. All those in favor say aye? Any opposed? Okay, we're in public hearing, any member of the public that would like to comment on this, please do so at this time, please state your name. And address for the record. If there were anyone here in person that could come up to the microphone, but they're not, if there's anyone online that would like to speak, please unmute yourself and tell us who you are. Seems pretty controversial.
Yep. Make a motion to close public hearing.
I'll second.
I have a motion to close the public hearing, a motion and a second to close the public hearing. On the proposal to adopt a revised zoning map for West Haven City, all those in favor say aye? Any opposed? Okay, we're out of public hearing, discussion on the map, and we've discussed it before and talked about it, we appreciate. All your work, I'm really glad I didn't have to do it. Gives us a good. I don't know, assurance that we're on the right path, right?
Well, and that was my biggest thing, because, like I said, after what we dealt with last summer with the open space subdivisions, I'm like. I, I need to get myself, Alka, you guys, council, I need to get everybody. Like, on the same page, because we've had conversations, well, this is this and this is this, well. It's not, and that's not what the ordinance says, so.
So do we recommend this goes forward to city council for their approval, is that what the motion needs to be?
It needs, it needs to be adopted by the city council by ordinance, just because that then gives us a permanent record.
Yeah, solidifies it.
Yeah.
Yeah. We've discussed it before, so I don't know, we need to beat it to death anymore, do we? I'm ready for a motion.
Alright, I make a motion that we move the, um. We move the motion to, I'm stuttering here, that we send this on to city council for their approval. That we change the zoning map to what has been presented by Sherry.
Well, you should be a lawyer.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to recommend to city council the revised West Haven City zoning map, all those in favor say aye? Any opposed? Okay, it's on the city council. I just thought, the way you talked around that, it was awesome. Okay, we are adjournment, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye? Any opposed? We are adjourned, thank you.